All right, if you would please, welcome everyone and let me call this a special call meeting to order. We are here to have a COVID-19 discussion and we are, we don't usually, when we have a special call meeting, have public comment, but we are going to have public comments tonight if you would like to make a public comment or welcome to. If you do, just come up, sit at the table, name, address, and you have two minutes. So does anybody wish to make a public comment? Okay, we'll just, why don't we just start over here at this side of the room?
Good afternoon and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Karen Sandler and my address is 3 Summit Drive, Black Mountain, North Carolina. I've been working in the health field for over 30 years, specifically working with breathing and yoga practices as well as teaching stress management classes at the Florida College of Natural Health. What we found when we did studies about stress is that stress is the cause of over 90% of most illnesses in society today. One of the things, one of the best tools for alleviating stress is the breath. When we restrict the breath for the person, the nervous system goes into the sympathetic response, which is the fight or flight response, which produces adrenaline and cortisol, which depress the immune system. It increases heart rate and it also increases blood pressure. So when we can breathe fully and allow oxygen to come into the body, we are using the parasympathetic nervous system, which is the rest and digest part of our being. So I feel like it's a disservice for people, especially wearing a mask for eight hours a day, to be depleting them of fresh oxygen and actually doing damage to the immune system, not allowing them in the middle of this viral situation to have a very healthy immune system. So my, you know, my desire is for everybody to be healthy and happy and to move through this with the most scientifically based information. And there really is a very big controversy on whether the masks even help with the prevention of this virus. So I think in order for people to have healthy immune systems, we need to have the nervous system out of that fight or flight and reduce the stress for people that are working. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
I have a print off a little thing. Can I approach and give you one of your probably got data? That would just make it easier visually to see. Can I just hand it to you?
Just hand them over to Mr. Christie and he can pass them on down.
Does this need to stay on while I talk? Okay. Hi, thank you. I'm, my name's Ariel Haas. I live at 100 Ridge Street. I'm a resident and I'm a business owner as well, but more importantly, I'm also the, I'm a scientist and the president of the Institute for Pediatric Health, which is a national nonprofit organization dealing with pediatric health as it sounds. So I'm a data guy. I speak to numbers. I don't speak with hearsay and so on. So the first thing right off the bat is, I know it's very difficult, the research shows, to change people's minds. So I hope that you come into this with an open mind to be able to listen as I show you data and hope that you'll see with what I'm describing that you'll, you'll end up with a no vote today. So sometimes we get lost and confused by numbers. So the way that I work is I intentionally try to simplify things, available, very simple calculations and so on. So some of them come from Director Saunders herself. So the first number you'll see there is the number of cases in Buncombe County per week. The number is .00261. That's per week, or if you wanted to break it down per day, the number of cases in all of Buncombe County is .0037 per day, based on the total population of 261,000. That's a census number from 2019. I'll simplify it for you because I know those numbers, people just get lost. So out of every 1,000 people in Buncombe County, last, the last two weeks, there were 2.6 cases of COVID. Out of one, would you be forcing masks and social distancing on your constituents? I'll give you an example on the next table there.
You have two minutes.
Close. Okay. 2017, 1.7 out of 1,000 died from the flu. The last two weeks, .003 deaths per 1,000. When viruses mutate, they become more transmissible normally and they become less virulent. That's normal as we are seeing with Delta. Lastly, 70% of the community is already protected either from natural immunity, from getting it, or from vaccination. To now impose masks on the businesses, on the people affecting the economy, how many will we force into poverty, depression, suicide, and so on? Don't let fear dictate policy, in my opinion. Let the data guide your decisions, please, and let us, the residents of Black Mountain, take care of one another while we maintain our freedoms. Thank you for the time.
My name's Steve Collins. I manage the Black Mountain coin laundry. I just, I also retired as a Marine Corps as a Colonel, as a disaster response officer, FEMA trained, anti-terrorism officer, Army War College grad. So I'm kind of a critical thinker in this thing and I really want to know about, I want to know if you've declared a disaster, that would say I could, I can impose martial law and then what the threat is and what the risk is and who that risk is to. I think that's the way we decide when we're going to impose something in the liberty of people. So I'm kind of with this last guy. And the idea is, I like to see us united, but it seems like we're with the healthy and the unhealthy and the responsible and the irresponsible that we're, we're fighting between these two folks or opinions. And the idea is we want to control somebody. And there may be a reason because it's August, why is people, why would people think to have the flu? I mean, it just doesn't happen usually in August. It's usually in the cold when we're all together. And I'm always so concerned that people want to mask children in school. So the idea is what rigor do we go through to make a decision like this? And I'm really counting on you guys. I love this place. This place is so awesome and people are so kind and we do a great job. Our businesses are doing a great job. When you asked them to wear masks, they did. When people, when you asked us to do double cleaning, we did. So all those things were going on as this whole thing is going on now. We're a year and a half into it. I've never gotten it. I don't know anybody here that has gotten it. I do know people that have died of it other places, but every time they've got something troubling. So I guess the question is, what rigor are you going to do to make, it doesn't look like we got the rigor from Buncombe County, are you going to make to take care of us, the American people who are being responsible? Thank you.
If we could, if we could, it would be great if we, let's just listen and hold the applause and so forth, please.
My name is Charlotte McCraney. I live at 251 Valley Ridge Lane. I did file a comment prior to this, but I want to add to that comment. One of the things that is, I think, most disturbing and is, in all of the data that I've read, becoming more prevalent, is the fact that even those who were vaccinated are capable of transmitting this virus to others. And that is becoming very, very evident in all of the data that's being conveyed to us from the doctors and the CDC. So we may be staying out of hospitals by and large if we're vaccinated, but also breakthrough infections are starting to happen. I know personally of two or three people in this town who have come down with COVID, who are vaccinated now are happening. So this is something we cannot take lightly. And the most recent data is that maybe even some of the most prevalent carriers of the virus. Our children under 12 cannot be vaccinated right now. And we must think of them. And there, if you look at the data across this country, in the areas where masking is prohibited, those children are starting to end up in the hospital at very, very high rates. So we really need to think about them.
Go ahead and finish your sentence. It's okay.
We really need to be thinking about those children and we think about this community.
I'm Mary Sorels. I live at 121 East College Street, Black Mountain. And I want to speak in favor of mask optional signs. I went into a grocery today and they had a sign that said, "If you have these symptoms, if you have experienced symptoms, please do not come in." So it wasn't a decree, you have to, but it was a reminder. And I also saw a demonstration just real recently that, that we, under the mask, we are inhaling CO2 at a higher level than our bodies need and are used to. And I really, I think if we pushed the social distancing thing, if we continue to practice that, right now, Black Mountain is so peaceful. It is absolutely beautiful to go anywhere. I, driving over here, there were people in masks, people not in masks, just very pleasant people doing what they need to do. It's emotional to think, I need to take care of myself. I need to feel safe. But we can't. We do take care of ourselves and we can take care of one another, I think, real well with the social distancing and that sort of thing. So I like mask optional. The definition of safe is different for different people. Thank you.
My name is Pam Aitor. I live at 1 Teresa Way in Black Mountain. I sent an email to all of you because I really wanted you to know how I felt and what I felt the specifics was like. What I didn't say in that email and what I would want you to know is I've lived here seven and a half years and I love this town just like everyone else does. I chose to live here because my children, I have children nearby in East Asheville. And I like my street. I like my house. I like my neighborhood. I like coming shopping in our stores. And every time I look at something like Black Mountain Exchange, I see all of these people who take care of things. They take care of everybody's puppies and everybody's kitties and they tell about who's lost and who's missing toys. I can't imagine why we would not take care of each other, why we would not choose all the time options to care for others. We not only have young children, we have elders in this community, a significant proportion of them, who will be running out of their vaccine if they're vaccinated, which by and large we are. We are running at the edge now of when we first had our vaccine. We need to protect the people in our community. We live in a community where people come from all across this country to visit. I don't see why we cannot ask them to be masked. We have no idea where they come from or where they've been before they get here. We actually live in a little bubble, but everybody who comes here doesn't come from our bubble. And they reside in homes here part of the season or they come shopping here. And when I go in a store and I see somebody without a mask behind the counter and somebody standing in front of them, breathing on them for 15 minutes while they pay their bill, I'm like, "So I appreciate all of you and taking time to help." Thank you.
Nathan West, 537 Brandon Road, Black Mountain. We've heard from a doctor. We've
heard from a disaster specialist. And I wish I could say I had some sort of specialty to be up here, but mine is just an opinion. We talk about taking care of people. I've seen businesses in Black Mountain close down. I've seen businesses close down because they have one case of COVID. They shut down for a week. They clean their stuff. They make sure that their employees are taken care of. They're already having to shut down additional days per week because they can't get people to, to show up to work. And in an effort to protect those people and to keep those good people around, they, they, they lose their money. They, these people lose their money to take care of other people. This mandate does nothing, nothing, other than put up a sign. It doesn't protect anybody. No one sits there and says, "Oh, well, there's that sign. I better put my mask on." That's, that's not how it works. There's no teeth to it. There's, there's, it's unenforceable. And people are already taking care of each other in this community. And to just come in here and just say, "Well, we're going to put together another mandate. We're having a special meeting on Friday," that, that does nothing to benefit anything in our community other than, is my time up? Close to it? Okay. You know, other than to signal that, hey, we want to do something. If you want to do something, let's go ahead and put those signs up. Let's, let's send the downtown officer around to encourage people to say, "Hey, guys, you know, if you're thinking about it, put the sign up," stuff like that. But this mandate is, it's just, it's just go along to get along. You know, I don't, I don't know how Buncombe County feels about, about the town not doing it, but you know, it, it just doesn't make sense to me unless you're going to enforce it, unless you're going to put teeth behind it. And if you do that, then you're effectively up against some, some civil liberties issues. So thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Matt Begley. I live at 56 Highland Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Aldermen for allowing me to speak. And I'd also like to thank everyone else here for engaging in the process of government and the journalists who are here reporting on it. I'm a recent college graduate with a degree in biology from Davidson College. I was born in Black Mountain. I've lived here again since I was evacuated from overseas. I too, like many others, am kind of put out with a mask and I wish this whole pandemic would go away. I'm kind of tired of wearing it. Makes me uncomfortable. And it makes me regret when I forget to brush my teeth. However, it's still a necessary component for protecting me and those around me. According to Dr. Perry Wilson, an epidemiologist at Yale Medical School, the rate of transmission for the Delta variant is around 3.5 to four as opposed to the wild type, which was 2.5 or so. Along with the low vaccination rate in the county, which is still below 60%, it's a recipe for future outbreaks and lost friends in this community. I've lost two people who are close to me already and my cousin is now dealing with a permanent heart condition from having COVID in the first place. I heard what Mr. Harris said in an interview with WLFS last night, and I understand your position and why that point is valid, that most people wouldn't readily comply with wearing masks in public and indoor settings, even if it was a law. However, there's also a reason that I can't pull out a cigarette in this meeting. Years ago, public officials made the decision to pass laws prohibiting smoking in public spaces. They did this listening to public health experts and researchers who had concluded that secondhand smoking put others in the same room as the smoker at a much greater health risk. There was backlash, yes, but it was, it was a good decision. The decision rests with you now on whether you will mandate masks in public indoor spaces. If you have not made the choice, that most other munis, or several other municipalities have made to require vaccination in public indoor spaces, and if you do not require masks to be worn in indoor, okay, and if you do not require masks to be worn in indoor public spaces, what are you going to do to protect children who are ineligible to get vaccinated and immunocompromised adults whose response to the vaccine was not as effective? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I am most concerned about transmission to the ineligible to be vaccinated, namely our kids. Data has shown that even asymptomatic cases can, can hold long-term neurological and cardiac problems. And from, I do have a public health background and I understand that the virus will continue to mutate. It will continue to get more gnarly than it is currently in the absence of more widespread immunity. But frankly, if we were all eligible and making a choice on our own to be vaccinated or to not be vaccinated, you want to play roulette. Your business. But for me and my family, when I have people who aren't eligible to be vaccinated yet and I'm already being forced or at least compelled to send them to school in close proximity to others unvaccinated, it just seems premature to say, "Go ahead and take the masks off. Give it another six months. Give it till September whenever they say kids can have it." I'm willing to change my mind, or at least change what I'm saying. But right now, we have a huge portion of this population that's not even eligible and we have people coming in from out of state. You know, we don't know where they've been. We don't know what their status is. We don't know how virulent it is in their communities. And we're just screwed with our hands tied and it just seems unfair.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments and so forth. And so I would, I had the opportunity to speak and to back my, my thinking known and I'll turn it over to the board, but I would offer this comment that just what we've seen in the room today is just, there are a lot, there are a lot of different opinions about everything that's going on in our community, county, state, the country. And, and so I think it's been very good that we can even have this meeting today, hear from people with different opinions, different perspectives. And, and I will, I will turn the discussion over to the board and really their decision before them is to, is to, is to comply with the county's order, or, or, if they take the other action that they want to. But that's really the, the, the decision before. My preference was to try the route of voluntary compliance. It's challenging and that's, that's, it's just what it is. It's a challenging thing. And the, the medical community, by and large, and again, by and large, not completely, the medical community, leadership, the Mission Hospital leadership, the HCA, leadership at the county, Dr. Bolandor at other county public health leadership, you know, they're fairly consistent on the direction that they're giving. And it, it makes it difficult for public officials to take a different route. You can see that's happening all over the country. And those who do, they're doing it because that's really who the people they represent by and large feel that way as well. So there's, as well as, in form of government work. In our town, the reaction that we've gotten, the input that they work for, that the board has received, that the council has received, and email communications is, I would say gets 80 to 90% of the correspondence received was, was in support of the county's mandate. So that's, that's just representative of the fact that here, all those people who communicated with council and they may not have been town residents, but you know, it's, it's one of those and many others. So I'll leave it at that. It's a tough decision and whatever the board decides, I'm, I'm behind them. They have tough decision to make, no different than the county commissioners did. And regardless of how this comes out today, I would just like to encourage all of us to keep on being good neighbors, keep on being considerate, keep on being patient. And I think it's a good opportunity based on what I'm hearing. I have a fortunate opportunity to serve on the Mission Hospital board. And I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not, you know, it's not, it's the rate of increase is starting to, you know, starting to feel back just a little bit. And a lot of, a lot of the medical folks are saying it could be two to four weeks and we'll see, you know, we'll see some, you know, some other. So we'll, we'll be hoping for that. I think that's, behind that is really the duration of the county's order, which was over September of February. And so just to be clear, the county order is mask indoors, not outdoors. It is not applicable to worship, to churches, it's not applicable to funerals, to weddings. And I think, based on my trip to the YMCA today at lunch, that they weren't, they weren't sure what, how, how the order applied. This is the law. The worship of the family law. We're quite certain how the order applied to the gyms and playgrounds. Have I left out any major component of what of the order? It's masking indoors. It's not required outdoors and not required in churches and, and for gatherings. So of course not required.
It seems to be, for the most part, most of it, yes.
Yeah. So I think that's, that's what it is. And with that, I'll turn it over to the board and ask them, you know, their, their, their direction contrary to anything that I offered thus far.
I'd like to make a comment, first of all, to thank all of you for being here and for this civil discourse. You know, I didn't really know what to expect today. And I'm really grateful that everybody's being the good neighbors that we know we can be in Black Mountain, North Carolina. As the mayor mentioned, we got many messages. We all get them, you know, they all go to one email address and we all get them. So I think we've gotten a pretty, we all know what we've read. And I appreciate everybody that took the time to, to send those messages and share their thoughts on this matter. I read them carefully. I'm sure everybody did. The ones that really, that I read with careful, more careful attention were from business owners. Merchants in Black Mountain have to deal with the public on a regular basis. Those were, those really caught my eye. And the vast majority of them, there was one exception, but the vast majority of them said, "Please pass the mask mandate. We need help dealing with the public. We need the town to support this effort." And to me, that this effort. And to me, that makes a difference when our local merchants are asking us to do this. So that's going to be a big factor in how I vote. If we, are we doing a motion today without?
Well, we can probably handle it. We'll let everybody have their comment, and then we can, then I tell them what we're saying, that you would like to follow the county order.
I would like to follow the county order. It's till September 30th, and it's in large part due to this significant surge we're seeing in cases. It's not a permanent situation. I'm not looking, I don't like masks any more than you do. And I'm not looking to make this a permanent thing, but I do think we're going to have to pull together with the county. We're not an isolated place. We, our borders are porous with the county, right? And we can't see ourselves as separate in a pandemic. So I would, I would be supportive of going with the county's mandate. My whole, I want the same thing all of you want, and that's to return to normalcy and to get back to where we can enjoy seeing each other smiling faces again all the time. And I guess we all just have different, some of us have different points of view on how we get to that place. But I believe that going with the county's mask requirements till September 30th is the way to go.
Thank you, thank you. What I'll do, if it's agreeable to council, and I think this will work after we hear from everyone, just your comments, and you don't have to make long comments, you can say anything, but based on council's direction, I think it's to me a nice way for us to show our view and the agenda on this really important thing. I'll just simply change my order. I think that has a sense of showing that we are on the same page. And it's, I think it's important for the public to see that we can have differing opinions too, and still move forward and move together in a, you know, in a good, reasonable fashion. So that's what, that's what I would like to do.
Thank you. As I've emailed back and forth with many of you, I've made it very clear that I'm going to support aligning with the county today. I do believe it is in the best interest of the community, and we'll protect the health of those that can't be vaccinated that we've heard about today. I do want to say that, much like the mayor has previously said, we can agree to disagree on how we go about this. My action today in supporting aligning with the county is, is because from the health experts that he's mentioned, the county's health department, the data that we've seen, we know that masks can help blunt this surge and get us back to the normalcy that we're seeking. And that is my overriding guiding point in trying to move us forward. I'd like us to get back to normal. I'm asking you to sacrifice for a little bit longer, to put a mask on, to wait six feet apart, to wash your hands, use sanitizer. But all of those things are not done lightly. I know that it imposes certain confinements on you, and I respect that, and I appreciate you doing it. But this is how we'll get through this, together. If you disagree with me, I'm prepared to answer those with you in email, phone call, when I see you at the grocery store, wherever. You'll know where I stand. I'm not afraid to say that that's where I am at. I appreciate everyone's comments today, and I thank everybody for trying to keep Black Mountain safe and doing the best I can.
Thank you.
First and foremost, thank everybody for your comments. Just really appreciate it. There's a couple of things, and like Pam, I read every email. I didn't email anyone back, but I knew I was going to make comments tonight. I took each email seriously and under consideration. There's a couple of things that bother me. And one is the elderly. And number two are the children who are under 12 who cannot be vaccinated. Those things bother me a lot. So to make a long story short, I will be in support of the county's mandate to take it through the end of September.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today, and I greatly appreciate everyone's comments and having had, been given this opportunity to listen to people, as well as read the 60-plus emails that we've received over the last few days. As the mayor said, the emails were overwhelmingly in support of the mandate, and I was very mixed here tonight. But it was good to hear from so many different perspectives, from so many different people. I'm not an expert on COVID-19, and I don't know that any of us are. So we are then tasked to make a decision about COVID-19 and how it impacts people's lives. And so what I've been turning to are the experts at the county. And the county is recommending that we go through with a mask mandate in the county, based on the numbers here and the spread, the recent spread here. And so, as I think about my own kids, as I think about all of the people in the community that I would like to protect and make sure that are safe, and I think I will be supporting the rest mandate as well. I did want to comment as well about the business owners. We did hear from several, and as Pam said, you know, the vast majority were in support of the mandate. I think that's for a few reasons. One is to protect their employees and the people who come to their shops or to their restaurants. And then also, because they're really worried about another shutdown. And if we have more spread, if the numbers get worse, then that will significantly impact them, far more than putting on a mask will. And as we're seeing in other states, as we're seeing in other places where restaurants, where people are having to go into quarantine in massive numbers, where schools are, who've only been back for a week, are having tens of thousands of people in quarantine, you know, I just think this is the right move for the county at the moment. And so that's what I'll be splitting.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I join everyone in thanking everyone who came out tonight. Really appreciate it. Appreciate seeing so many people out and hearing different perspectives, which I value. Same with the emails. I read all of them very carefully. I did send the same response to everybody because I couldn't, didn't have the time to respond individually. And I think it is, obviously, it's a very complicated question. It's an emotional question, and I think it puts people in an unfair opposition at times. I believe that most of us want the best for everybody, and so we're just trying to make the best decisions that we can. I am in support of following what the county has suggested. I think that they have based it on the best science that they know how to do. I think they're doing the best they can do. I'm sure they're not perfect. I'm sure they would admit that they're not perfect. In 20 years from now, all of this will make sense, and we'll know if we made smart decisions or bad decisions. We don't know now. And that makes it very difficult. But the science, speaking with doctors, I was just, had a checkup with my doctor yesterday. There is no doubt in his mind about what needs to happen, and that is masking is proven to be effective and makes sense to me. I understand there are other views. I understand, you know, what makes it difficult. But I hope we can all go together, support it, and let's get through this as soon as we can, and also encourage everyone to get the vaccinations too. I think that is a very critical point. We obviously can't force it. So I'm in favor of following what the county says, but also think it's good for governments to be consistent.
Thank you. Thank you, council. And with that, town manager and county clerk, you would just communicate that likely change the order for the town of Black Mountain to comply with the county's orders, and we will be with the county until September 30th, or if they lift that order before then.
Would you like, when would you like this to be effective? Immediately after a vote? Or are you already going to vote?
I don't know that we need to. I'm just going to change my order. We don't need to do that. And I think, as I said earlier, I think that this is a good display of our collegiality and hopefully setting a good example for our citizens that even though we have different opinions, we'll move forward and agree with them. So if you'll just communicate that, that, you know, that we are, oh, effective, is there, you know, I'll take advice from you, from the town attorney, is there, is a problem with, it's effective in the county as of this morning or yesterday?
Yesterday, when it's on adoption, yeah.
I think it's fine. Why don't we just make it effective, why don't we just make it effective tomorrow morning? I think that would make sense. And it's going to take a couple of days for the communication to get out regardless. But if you could, I think perhaps, you know, it would just be somewhat word of mouth. Unfortunately, at this time of the day, unless, because I don't know how else you could get it out very effectively. But it's just as well, if you waited, it'll murder you. It'd still take a couple of days for it to filter through the community properly. So unless anybody feels any differently, effective tomorrow morning, let's say at 8:00?
I'll take care of it.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one question.
Sure.
For Josh, is the county providing any standardized signage for shop owners? And can we get back here? I mean, just to make it?
If they are, I'm not aware of it, but I'm happy to reach out and say.
Would you mind doing that? Because I think it'd be real important for us to have the same message in each, all through the town. The visitors don't know.
Sorry, Pam. I was going to say, I know the Asheville Chamber does, and it's available to be picked up.
I believe the Black Mountain Chamber does as well.
Okay.
Sharon's had that.
Whatever we can do to get that message out, it's kind of like a no shirt, no shoes, no service kind of, and people are used to seeing, I guess. I know they provided those giant banners.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other member of council at the meeting? If not, I think we've accomplished our purpose of the call meeting and meeting adjourned. Thank you, public, for being here for your comments.